All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the regular Village Council meeting. The order of the Council of Oxford is December 21st and time 7:02. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Chair, could you call the roll things?
Sure. Lauren Borjoe here. Kelsey Cook here. Maureen Hallman is absent. Allison Kemp here. And Ashton Ross here.
All right, we have a quorum. I move to excuse Maureen Hallman from this evening's council meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Cook, second by Ross, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Okay. Number four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to remove item 8B and move it to January so that Brian can be here for the meeting next month.
Perfect, I'll second that. Motion made by Ross, seconded by Cook, any discussion? All those in favor of ending the agenda to remove 8B, postpone that until January? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next is the presentation of our financial statements fiscal year end and our audit presentation.
So I believe Terry passed out PowerPoint slides for you guys to follow along. Does anyone have a copy of the bound audit report or are you all just following along with the PowerPoint slides?
Thank you.
Slides, okay, that sounds easier, I just want to make sure because I would reference page one. So anyways, my name is Kevin Cosmick, I'm an auditor at Gaybridge Company, I'm the in charge of the Village of Oxford Audit. So first and foremost, it was great working with Terry in the Village, it was great working with Kelly and Plan Moran and everyone else involved with the audit process. Thank you all for being flexible and scanning the audit documentation so we could perform the audit remotely, we greatly appreciate that. So, the next slide you'll see is the Village's opinion. We gave them an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance the Village could receive on an audit, so I definitely give yourself a pat on the back for that. Three very large things to know also, there were no internal control deficiencies noted during the audit, there were no budget deficiencies noted during the audit, and there were no deficit fund balances. Now flip with me to the next slide, these are the financial highlights for the Village. So a couple things to point out, the Village's fund balance across all funds as of June 30th, 2022 was roughly $2.3 million, which increased 753K roughly. General funding and fund balances of June 30th, 2022 was $1.56 million, an increase of roughly 756K. An unassigned fund balance was $1,554,036, and this is approximately 75.2% of annualized expenditures and transfers out. Now, the GFOA recommends anywhere from 17% to 25%, and if you flip with me to the next slide, you'll actually see a visual depiction of this ratio increasing for the Village all the way dated back to 2019. So for one, they're well ahead of the GFOA's recommendation, and two, you'll see a steadily increasing over the past few years, so that's just a sign of good fiscal accounting practices by the Village. So again, just something to hang your hat on. Flip with me to the next slide. These are the comparative statements of net position. Just a few things to point out on this statement, cash increased roughly $911,000. It was primarily a result of the increase in net position, which was $1.3 million. The Village had a significant amount of capital assets purchased during the year, which caused an increase in net capital assets of 156K. Flip with me to the next slide. These are the comparative statements of activities, just a few more things to point out on this statement, capital grants and contributions decreased roughly $1 million during the year. This is a result of one-time capital contributions received last year from the state of Michigan and the VDA. Property tax revenues increased about $120K due to the Village's increase in taxable value, and public works expenses decreased almost $300,000 due to a one-time resurfacing project in the prior year in the Village's Lingerie Streets Fund. And the very last thing I wanted to point out is on the last slide, so flip with me. This is the schedule of changes in net pension liability, and just what I want to point out is it's gone from 59% funded to 69% funded over the past four years, steadily increasing, which is above the state's requirement of 60%. And the last slide just says, are there any questions?
Really quick.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, it was short and sweet.
No, not at all.
It's great to elaborate, I can't swallow it now.
I feel like it's an enormous amount of work. I went to Berdick Park, which I kind of appreciate, and so excellent presentation, and thank you for your support.
Awesome, well, thank you.
Any questions from the council? Hallman?
Just based on your summer, I don't know if there's anywhere else, but just to ask, is there anything that you seem to need to change or do differently, or is it where?
To be completely honest, just comparing you to like the rest of our audit clients, you're an A-tier client, so controls are great, you utilize Plant Moran Controllership Services, which is excellent, I really can't think of anything, and being completely honest and transparent with you all, keep doing what you're doing.
Perfect.
So, yeah. Yeah. Anything else?
I would just like to say, if you reference Plant Moran, and that's something that, you know, Terry brought down years ago, it's worked well, Terry works well with Kelly, and it's a lot of work that she does in preparation for that with Kelly as well, so I think the two of them, they really do.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it makes the whole lot of process a lot easier for everyone, so thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I saved your phone. He's got a couple of.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks.
Making a father a reporter, I mean, enjoying this.
Yeah. All right, next is call to the public, is there anyone who'd like to speak out or post a comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, items A, receive and file items.
Yeah.
You want to take a stab in?
I'll make a motion to receive and file items 7, 8, 1, and 2. Support.
Motion made by Ross, supported by Borjoe, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. So then B.
I am trying. I will make a motion to approve items 7, B, 1, and 2, including paying, and 3, including paying the bills total of $182,359.06.
Second. Sorry, motion made by Borjoe, seconded by Ross, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, a roll call vote please.
Borjoe?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Hallman is absent.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 8 on the agenda, unfinished old business, 8A is our PD project update at 32 East Berdick. I know we did get an update from Mr. Midori, we're in contact with Mr. Weckel, who's here tonight. Personally, I saw the fence, it was really nice to have done by this meeting already, so I appreciate that. Mr. Weckel, would you like to come up to the podium and give us your update? I appreciate your attending the meeting.
Do you want to start on the building or the parking lot?
Let's go to the building.
Well, the building, all right, well, things that have been completed since our last meeting was the caulking and of the control joints and of all the windows. It doesn't sound like much, but it's very extensive. That's completed, except for the windows are not in. Our windows, our glass for the first floor is being delivered next week on the 28th. That's when it will be shipped. When it will be installed, I don't know, depends on the weather, we can't install if it's real cold and windy out, but it'll be installed as quickly as we can. And the doors are also ordered, those won't be here till the end of January, the first part of February. The metal did show up, it's all on the third floor, ready to go up. We've got the balcony handrails and pickets that are all up there, so there's a lot of work now that we could do on the building itself, because we have the materials. Probably the most exciting thing, for me anyway, is the drawings have been completed for the build-out on the first floor. So they're going off the bid, and I hope we start it in January, so that'll be a good thing. Going over to the parking lot side, we have noticed we did get a shadow box fence installed, and Mr. Mosier was very happy with that, and it looks good. It, I think it does what he wanted it to do. And then probably more importantly is the garage has been emptied out, so it's ready for demo. Don't have a date for it, but I know it won't be Friday. But very well could be next week. We had some equipment failure, this cold is a little tough on my older equipment, my reservoir and my dump truck cracked, and it doesn't hold hydraulic fluid anymore, so I gotta see if I can get a replacement. It's cheaper to get a new reservoir than a new dump truck. Parking lot, I met with the contractor, and we've got a few things that we're going to try to do yet before the end of the year, but you probably won't even know that they're done. There's just things that were loose ends that weren't completed before, but they, we've got it all worked out with the engineer and surveying company and the contractor that in April started on it, and just go till it's got the base coat in on the asphalt. So it could be about, you know, four weeks once we start, so that'd be a good thing. And it could be used all summer that way.
When do you expect to start paving?
Next year, April. Could be made, we have to wait for the frost laws, and that's part of the issue, sometimes a, some, we've had years they don't even go on, I don't think they're gonna, that's gonna happen this year. We're gonna have frost laws, but.
If I could just interject, Allison, kind of to your point, when Dave talks, you know, he understands what he's talking about, sometimes the leaves will beg his bear. When you talk about that base coat being, and that's the base.
Oh, that is asphalt, yeah.
So not just the aggregate and the curving, but then the base part of asphalt being, he said hopefully if he starts in April and after four weeks period, he said the base coat is in, that means it's blacktop, you can drive on it apart, it's just not the very top end coat.
Correct. And that's, that's basically it, that's what's happened since our last council meeting.
Any questions?
I have a couple questions. One, I can drive you by every few days, so I have noticed things happening, which is great, the fence looks good. You said the windows are going to be shipped the 28th?
Yeah.
Delivered to you, or?
Delivered to us.
Okay. That's the arrival date, to us, okay.
Yes, yeah. If it changes because of the weather, obviously I don't have your control, but that's the scheduled shipment date.
And one thing I think when you went through it earlier, when you said all the coffee's done for windows and stuff, the window frames that they've been building the out have been installed as well, so you see the frames now too. I would buy it, just one day I have a look, they were all in, I didn't even see them going in, and they were in, so.
Yeah, there, well, there's still one more to do, actually, there's, there's one, two, two on the tower on the south, and one where the garage door is currently, and that window will be last, because we need that access for equipment to go in there, do concrete work and the heavy stuff. Once that's done, then we'll have the blockwork, close that off, and it'll be a window opening the same size as the one adjacent to it.
Have you had any updates with the elevator?
Yeah, actually, I should, it's not on my list. We have, the electrical is completed for the elevator, now we're just waiting for the plumber to do this hookup of the salt pump. Now, it's a little more than it sounds, it's a little more involved, but once that's done, then the elevator company will come back out and will start working on the elevator.
I have, I mean, I've been pleased with the progress I've been seeing, I know I wasn't here last month, but I was watching, and so I think, I've been seeing things, I know not everything is visual, and I know there's a lot of work that you put in prior, so I think we're on the right path with all of us just staying in touch and like.
Yeah, they're, I'm not even sure, well, like the stairways, for example, they've been done now probably about a month, but that's not something you can see. And it's actually was quite expensive to do that because of the weight, you know, they're solid oak, and we had to use our machinery to go through a window and, and come up with lifts, and we had about eight men on the job, and you know, it was, it was quite an ordeal, it took us two separate days just to do the sets. Lanes were already done, those were the easy part, but the stairs themselves were quite difficult. You don't have to climb a ladder.
My only hesitation is that if the drawings came from Valer, is just making sure that, you know, that moves forward in some way, shape, or form, because that could just continue to delay us, and I know that's kind of out of all of our control, but if there's ways that we could be communicative to make that happen, because I think that's kind of been the big holdup right now before finishing that first floor is getting that, so.
Well, yeah, but we still don't have any control.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, that's private property, it's inside the building, you know, I would say that the council has more control over the exterior than the interior. Now, however, Valer's lawn moves forward, I know she's anxious.
Well, right, I'm just saying that to make sure that it's closed up and everything's set, because it sounds like we're on track for what, like spring parking lot building-ish, obviously the inside is really not of our concern at this point, I would say, but I don't want to keep delaying it in case there's delays on their end.
Well, I don't delay it on purpose, believe me.
And you get the windows in anyway, so that'll make the build-out ready to go easier, I think.
It will, it'll look a lot better. The windows, this time of year, if we close it off totally and pour concrete, we're going to have a different type of problem, and I don't want that either. So I can't close it in entirely, but we're going to put in the smaller glass paintings, there's four paintings per window, four sections, and we'll put in three of the four, and leave one out for optional cement shoots. You know, it's a pretty good-sized building, and you can't just get it all from one, one window or one door opening, it just doesn't work that way. And I don't think the concrete company would want to use a pumper for that situation either, because it's not, they don't have the advantage of gravity, you know, coming up high and dropping it down, it all has to be pumped horizontal, and that's more difficult in the winter time also, because it has tendency to freeze up your lines because there's water involved. So, I don't know, it's, we're going to do the best we can. You know, we haven't even got to the point where the build-out contract has been signed to proceed with that, but we do have the drawings, which we've been waiting for. You know, they actually came very quickly once we had another architect, she went through three architects.
I just, I'm appreciative, because I've seen, I've seen the progress, I know I'm just emotionally happy having the fence out, I just want us to keep on this path, and like just stay as in touch as possible so that, I mean, it's a win-win or a lose-lose-lose, so we want all to be the winners here, so.
Sure.
If we can keep that going, I think we're good momentum, even though it's winter, and I know there's things out of our control.
Yep.
Any further questions, one second? Thank you, thanks for your time, you guys, I appreciate it.
Congratulations to Pete, I've known Pete a long time, he seems like one of his wife's here too.
Yeah.
He's a good man, I hate to see him leave, but I guess time does that to you, right? Right, Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas.
The second unfinished business is our crosswalk consideration, so we've been talking about two different potential crosswalks, one at West Berdick and Pleasant, and then one on Hanya Street near OBS.
Yeah, and I think we've had some rough numbers from DBW to Chief about what their cost might be to install the sign and stuff. The other cost we have to look at is when you're doing curb cuts and ranking it down. And I was reviewing some of those costs for Hudson Berdick's work for Terry for her active one, and that report yesterday, so we have a rough idea of what that can cost, so I may not have to use engineers as much, we do some numbers, so we can kind of estimate some of those costs, that all right, if we didn't do that here, roughly what it would be, we can probably bring something to TVA throughout the winters, we're bringing the bits, and all of that in spring, if you feel those costs are something you want to spend. The, and Chief Sol couldn't be here tonight, I excuse him. Rent me tickets.
Don't be.
What do you think?
So, the one we have to, he and I and the school have to come to a little agreement on the OBS part, what's really the best thought, and that might be a little direction from civil engineer-type folk there, because of the driveway coming out of the church, which is the best way, Mike was concerned that the kids, I suppose if you're only going to drive north 10, 15 feet to come across, I think they'll do it. If you tell them you're going to go 100 feet up there to cross, they won't.
Yeah.
But if you awaken that driveway coming around the church, heading across the school, I think we'd have to move 10, 15 feet north to make it safer and user-friendly.
Why do we need to get them away from that driveway? Because that's where they're coming up for the most part right now, and nobody's using it at the times they're using it.
Well, I'm not sure the other side though, the other side we're coming through another driveway, the exit driveway.
Okay.
And if you move 10 feet or so just away from those driveways, I think.
Thank you.
You know, it might be a little more costly now, because instead of coming into it, it's a ramp along the driveway, you might have to have a curb cut with an ADA ramp, but that is safer to direct them up that than that apron of an exit driveway.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, that one's a little more complicated. The one at West Berdick and Pleasant, I just constantly see people running across in the dark, I mean, and it's usually right at West Berdick and Pleasant, it's just that intersection, and so.
And my only thought there is, is there a benefit to go north of East Pleasant or Pleasant Pleasant? One brings it closer to this intersection, is that a problem? If it's closer to the hill, is that a problem? So I might at least bounce it off road and say, there's anything I could account for here, you know, you should go 10 feet from the intersection, you know? And one of those, I don't manage too much with those users, if they have the, which type they, Pleasant Street, because in the preference, I have to wear it one.
When this individual crosses there, I tend to cross in front of Kelsey's house because there's a street light there. It hangs over, because it's not exactly Kelsey's, it's, it might be the next house.
Say the west side, I mean, it doesn't.
What's that probably be, better versus?
Well, there's still, because there is a crosswalk sign, there's not an actual anything just piece of Hanya, and people aren't using that, so I've ended.
Right, so maybe the other way it might make, might make more sense, just West of Pleasant.
That's what I would like to see, I think makes the most sense, when people are coming up and down Pleasant, they're cutting Frosty Boy, or they're coming across the street right there to go back over to Hanya.
They're going to have to cross the street to, personally, because if they're coming from out of town, heading that way, they have to cross there and then Pleasant.
Right, so that's what, yeah, personally, that's what I like to see, that's where I just see so many people going across all the time, running with strollers and everything too, and then it's hard, they have to come into the road and Pleasant.
You don't give a all this.
And walk someone's around, which is either light or maneuvers, which is totally fine, but it would be nice.
Like I said, if there's something that would be problematic as far as a gash door is concerned, whatever, then okay, but if we don't have any concerns about it, then that makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, I feel like the hill, you mentioned the hill, but I feel like it's pretty far.
Yeah.
It doesn't start really going down until after.
About my house.
Yeah.
And it is 25 mile an hour, so it just keeps it down to 30.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd love to move forward all the days in the spring when we can, just because I think it's a huge improvement.
Yeah.
Public safety, walkability, especially with so many people coming down for all the VDA stuff, I mean, it's just a lot more people walking around.
Because that connects, it's a coffee shop that connects.
Deviation.
The pavilion.
Nice.
Yeah.
Public parking there for, you know, public flow and.
There's always been, even with Joe Probst here, we're concerned, how do we get people from the pollen trail this way to get up to that pollen trail access point, and then now you've got a proper place there as well, when Evergreen was up there too, it was a pretty complex for people to go to.
Yeah. Okay, so should we?
I don't know, I want to do, and I kind of bring up dates that, you know, January could worry.
Yeah.
But, you know, come on.
Okay, sounds good. Any further discussion on this item? Okay. We'll move on to new business, number nine, so we have our audit approval of financial statements. Not to a resolution or anything, for the ad, it's just a general approval of our audit presentation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've ever done a resolution in the past for that.
Okay. So I would move to approve the financial statements for fiscal year end 6/30/2022. Motion made by Kemp, is that correct? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would you like a roll call vote on that?
Sure. Borjoe?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to 9B, boards and commission member appointments. All right, so I'm looking at our spreadsheet, there's a lot of highlighted areas, so.
All the 22s.
All the 22s, okay.
And one vacancy on the VDA is 24, because it's vacant, highlighted.
Okay, so we go in order from top to bottom, zoning board of appeals is up first, and.
And can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
I, I haven't reached out to Mr. Sardi or Dave Gerber well, I didn't know if that's something that you.
I have in the past, but I did not this time either, so should we wait, or just, we know they're doing a great job, and so we'll just.
Yeah, because here's the thing, same kind of question, zoning board of appeals, they're on until their appointment for, for replacement, they're going to appoint us, we don't have to resign, they technically are still on until their replacement is reappointed.
Okay.
So you could reappoint them, and if for some reason they decided to resign, and they did not resign.
Right.
So there's no reason for us to believe that they want off.
Okay, we'll go with that, so.
That's a low ask.
Yeah, they need one a year.
You don't get to get off.
Just to clear up this highlighting, so for the zoning board, I'll move to, let's see here, appoint Subasari and Dave Gerber to the zoning board of appeals for the Village of Oxford.
Oh, 2025, is there any?
The term ending 2025, yes. Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, congratulations. So planning commission, so we have.
Mo's on there now.
Yep, I think she enjoys that.
And she does too. Planning commissioners, they're a three-year term, the exception is a township rep or a village or council rep, they're on a concurrent with their term of office.
Okay.
So she was at her term of office right now, and now she's a new term, so I think it's, it's good enough to get reappointed for this next four-year term.
Yeah, she would do that.
I'll move to appoint Maureen Hallman to the planning commission for a term ending.
November 2026.
Okay, November 2026.
Would be your four-year term.
Oh, I see, okay. Terminated November 2026, thank you. All right, there's second on that.
That is the vacancy below.
Okay.
But anyways, okay.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Borjoe, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries, congratulations. So there is a vacancy, so this one.
I don't know if we have any good applicants.
No, this might be something we can, in the new year, try to, who's not to reach on to see, I think there's some other.
Yeah.
She forgot to meet.
We have a taker in the audience. Okay. So is the planning commission having any problems with getting a quorum, or their members are pretty good about attending?
Pretty good, yeah.
Okay, good, so I'll keep, well, I'll keep that vacancy in mind, if anybody knows anyone who may be interested, please.
The application, isn't that nice?
That would be great. Okay, so then next we have our council, it's on the list here, we have our council appointments. Okay, so then next we have our council, this is on the list here, we have our council appointments for MML and Semco. And currently it's Allison Ashley for MML, Kelsey Laurie for Semco. Does anyone request any changes on that, or do you want to continue with what we have?
I, I feel like we should stay with what we're at and listen to anyone else's thoughts, but if someone is going to the conference, we can switch it up because.
Another thing that I like about the conferences, who's the voting delegate, is really what the difference matters.
So, I mean, realistically, if someone's going to the conference and say, MacAdar, there, I mean, someone else isn't going to go and vote and then come home. So maybe you can always switch it up if we need to.
Again, and if there's something to handle at conferences, you off for the conference and go to classes and, you know, one of you is the voting delegate, and that's what this really pertains to.
Does anyone have an interest in attending any of the conferences, or you want to be the voting delegate?
No.
Yeah?
Yeah.
For MML or Semco, I don't know if they both have any. Should look up.
I have to look them up. Can I have a little time to?
Yeah, can we, um, table that?
Yeah, again, that's, yeah, we, what you determine who it is, I'll let them know, they'll be on the roster. It's not like anything like thirty days is going to be pending.
Okay.
I can remember when their conference coming up. In the summertime, I believe.
Maybe it was September.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was one in September.
Yeah, so that's there.
Okay, can we postpone that then? Do you want a motion to postpone, or that's fine today?
No action is fine.
Okay, no action is good. Okay, so beautification commission. We have Jan Burr, who's willing to serve again, so that's great. And then another member who's not able to. We're just looking for another person who would like to.
So.
Be on the beautification commission.
Yes, it's a five downward commission, and it's due to charter, it's one of those three old things. Three must be the village, so two of them can be from anywhere, right? So I'd have to leave, all of these are in the village, I'd have to double check that to be sure, but. Kathy Helmuth has been up while as the chair for president, chair, yes. She is one just last week when she was in, so this last week can no longer do it.
Okay.
But Jan Burr will be happy to be reappointed for a four-year term, and then we can look for somebody perhaps for that vacancy. Again, anybody we know, this is so. These ladies seem fun.
Maybe Connie Dogg, and maybe I'll be able to, maybe I can talk to Connie.
She's really good at that.
Connie, if you're listening, we know.
I think they watch a few days later, so.
So, yeah, as Burr could be reappointed.
Okay, yeah.
So choose.
That would be wonderful. So I'll move to reappoint Jan Burr to the beautification commission with the term ending, I believe that'll be twenty-twenty-five. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any name, motion carries. And then, I'm probably making a lot more work for you, Terry, with all these separate motions. Okay.
Don't worry about that.
Well, yeah, you can't charter them all together.
Yeah. Polyatrial management council, so right now Allison, does it seem you'd like to continue?
I love the way it works right now, and here's why. I'm the alternate, I cannot be an officer, and today was elections, they cried, but I remain that the bylaws.
They like getting the whoever's newest to be the secretary.
Well, they, they were, I think they were almost appointed to be determining new foreign township person. Before they even showed up, they were going to make that person treasurer, but then they moved them over there. But no, they, they did not take it at all. But I like being the alternate member.
So. I would like to continue to serve unless anyone else, it's convenient for them.
I don't believe me anywhere.
Because I, the problem is, it's such a hard, I had to like take off work essentially to. So I almost, I, I, sometimes I can make it.
Three V M's tough.
It's a hard, yeah. So I kind of like our system of I send Joe and then I slide in if.
That works.
If the time allows and.
That works and, and again, you said before, it's so much more flexible when you first started, you were able to make it, right? And now you, you work normally those hours, which is tough, but they understand and they're happy to have me there in your place and.
I'm happy to send your job.
It sounds like unless there's no other interests, we'll keep the status quo on that one. What, how long is that term?
It says a biannual certification, it's really, it's their bylaws, so we have to affirm it like every, at least once every two years. So I guess you can just.
I'll move to biannually certify Allison Kent to the Polyatrial Management Council.
Yep, as a member.
Member.
And me as the alternate.
And, yep, Joe Madori as alternate.
Perfect.
Thank you. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Borjo, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And these ayes are kind of like.
I haven't needed to respond.
Just making sure we're there, we're there. Okay, then we'll move down to the DDA, which is, seems to always be continued interest in the DDA, which is awesome, so thank you, Kelly. Um, and let's look, we have. Okay. Find my way here.
Yeah, Mr. Clark, we just appointed, but he.
But it ends already?
Yeah.
Because he was, okay.
Same thing with Grace.
Okay, Kelly, do you want to move to Napoleon, just give this little guidance on me as well? Thank you.
I did mention I want to swim both those individuals, they would be renewed at the end of the year, so.
Yep, and I just checked in with both of them, and they were excited to be renewed.
Perfect.
And then same with Dorothy on there as well.
She would like to continue.
She would like to continue.
Okay.
She's grouped all three together.
Yeah, let's do that, and we'll do the vacancy after. So I will move to appoint to the DDA Bryce Clark, Grace Carey, and Dorothy Roberts Johnston. To four-year terms. Ending twenty-six. To, yep, to the Oxford Downtown Development Authority as members.
Second.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Borjo, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any name, motion carries. Thank you. So we have an application for a new member in the vacant position that was vacated in April. And that is.
Yep, so Leanne, she serves on our promo committee and she has for about a year and a half now. Happy to say, never missed a meeting, and she always takes charge. So she was responsible for putting together the bike pay and handling all of that for the scare girl fest. And has volunteered for pretty much every single event we've gotten in the last year and a half, even decorating downtown. So would love for her to serve the rest of that term, which is just two years. And the DDA board on Monday discussed it, and everybody was also in favor, so. We'd be happy to have her.
Thank you so much, thank you. How do you pronounce her last name, is it Nas?
It's Nas, yep.
Okay. All right, so I and she, it's the creative community, so go green.
That's the only problem.
Go green.
Yep, so I'll move to appoint Leanne Nas to the Oxford Downtown Development Authority as a member for a term ending, said in two years, so that would be twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries, thank you, welcome her for.
Can you say it's awesome that so many people, you know, the DDA is so active and so many people are. You know, every time they have a vacancy, it's like we always have people going out, but I think that's just, it's amazing.
Yeah, there's a lot. All right, so next is nine C, we have the resolution for managers' goals and objectives for twenty-twenty-three. This is the proposed resolution twenty-twenty-two dash sixteen. Um, I wanted to amend this resolution, I think it reflects what we discussed. Um, number four, number six seem a little bit repetitive to me, so I would keep number four. Strike number six, and as a new number six, I wanted to add something about, we did discuss, um, you know, for community outreach, like through social media, and so maybe a focus on that for this next year and attending any, if there's any kind of like conference or training or anything that would kind of be beneficial to you, Joe, that you might find, um, good for you to take advantage of that.
It's one of them, I haven't heard her.
In terms of four, can we also add on? Could we have an overview of like the year, what's coming up? For example, when CG, CG, C.
CGG?
Yes, is coming up, and when contracts are renewing, so we can kind of have an idea of like a long. View of what's happening, sort of, sometimes it sneaks up on us the Thursday before and then.
Like a year out of, a year out of.
Yeah.
Can I, sorry.
No, you left that, I have another question.
Can I ask a question, and this is partly because I missed, um, last one. It's my understanding we haven't made any motion on pay increases and that it was. I don't know what was discussed in closed versus open before I continue on.
Nothing was discussed in open session, and we didn't actually. I know Mo wanted to address any pay increases with the budget, so that's a question I had to, I was saying like.
That's not how we've ever done it, I mean, the few years that I've been here.
No.
But also, we just received this glowing audit, we have two employees, we have a wild amount of inflation. I was just curious, since we're kind of talking a lot.
Yeah, we can, I think maybe after we approve this resolution, we could make a motion to, or.
Okay.
A cost of living increase, would that be appropriate, Terry, to do?
Sure.
You want to do that?
Would that mean we go in the closed? And will we be able to do it today, or will we?
We would have the motion public, but I don't have any.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be anything for closed session, it would just discuss, discuss that openly.
Okay.
I understood Mo's point though of discussing it in July, because I do think. When we're looking at budget as a whole, it's easy for us, or it's easier for us to see the big picture and see how like every, what's, you know, how everyone's salary is lining up, or I feel like this one's kind of floating out there and.
Goes with their performance, it goes with their, yeah, so we discussed that other, the, after this.
So let me, so, I'm reducing the number four, where you had, I put provided here to glance preview.
Yep.
I did have one question, and is this the year we do contracts? That uses those.
The, the union contracts? Yes, July, the, one of the years we'll start with contracts, so the spring, yeah, we will start looking at those.
Is that something we should?
I, I, let me go as part of why, I guess maybe it's part of our charter group's month to wait might cover all that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Voting, managing contracts, I think it's included in month to wait already.
Thank you.
Any other questions or question modifications?
No, I like your modification, I agree with it.
Okay, I'll move to, um, I'll move to approve proposed resolution twenty-two dash sixteen with the two modifications, one to number four and one to number six, so maybe the clerk has those. And let me know if you need me to.
Well, clarification on number six, was it, did you say a focus on like media slash communications and for the manager to attend a conference or training and those areas or?
Yeah, I said community outreach and social.
Community outreach, social media, I got.
Yeah. There's second on that?
Second.
So a motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Ross?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Um, so let's put, um, a. Do you want to make a motion to get the discussion started, and we can always amend it?
Yep, um, I will, you want, yes. I will make a, make a motion for a five percent increase for our village manager. You want to do it effective January one? Effective January one, twenty-twenty-three.
I support that.
Okay, so there's a motion and support, so let's discuss that, so.
I mean, I think it's smaller, just no matter where you go, the first full pay period in January, this makes it easier for me.
Yeah, first full pay.
It might be the seventh or eighth or whatever, but first day period, so she has that for me.
Yep.
I will amend my motion to say that.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion?
What's word base how are you right now?
Eighty-five. Once you had, you know, the solid E number last year, it was E number. Percentages was always rare numbers, and it was like, I don't know, but now you get a regular number, it's E number.
Oh, the percent, we just messed that up again.
Well, no, but I think things, we had to do some adjustments.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had to.
So five percent cost of living increase, I, I think right on target, that's open coming provided to all its non-represented members. It's, I mean, been studied, it's definitely valid, given the cost of living is much higher than that. So I'm really comfortable with that, if there are any concerns on that. I know you brought up maybe, um, you know, kind of the difference between doing it with the, you know, reviews versus doing it during the budget time.
No, I, I suppose I'm conflicted as well, because I do think it should go along with review. I just, it, I feel as if, when we do the budget, we look at the big picture. You know, we can really see the numbers and hash out the numbers then, in terms of everyone, instead of some people getting skipped. Because I know there was a long period of some staff numbers, their way to stay, stay stagnant.
Hey, years ago, the D W grant, last contract, we addressed that pretty well, I think.
Make office staff in more months.
Yeah.
And I know you're down to the last.
Any further discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none, um, we'll do a roll call vote please.
Borjo?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so move on to nine D, this is the proposed resolution for the clerk treasurer goals and objectives twenty-twenty-three. I did not have any amendments to this proposal, did anyone? I'll move to approve, or move to adopt resolution twenty-two dash thirteen for the goals, objectives, and duties of our village clerk and treasurer.
Support.
A motion made by Cook, supported by Borjo, any discussion on this resolution or motion, I mean? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Ross?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. And motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to give a pay increase during the first full pay period of twenty-twenty-three to our village clerk treasurer and a ending on five percent of her annual salary.
Support.
Motion made by Ross, supported by Borjo, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Cook?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is our proposed resolution for the open county park grant application.
Okay, I was reading there for a minute, let me catch up. So again, we thought we were going to be applying for this by January, middle of January, but they put it out, it might not even be rolled out until February, even the applications, but I thought, well, I had this prepared already anyways, it talks about the, uh, the. the, the author's being assigned a grant when it comes to submission of the grant improvement for $100,000. We talked about our 25% required match. Village action show make a local master financial payment of cash, force accounts. Well, we've identified before that. It's those capital improvements aspects we have already calculated the end of there. The chain wall and the everything. This just basically gives me the full compliance rate.
I'll move to approve a resolution 22-14 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Ross. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Or Jo?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is our 2023 meeting schedule.
This goes to village council second Tuesday. That's what we've had historically.
Yes. And for instance, on the CBA, we put no meeting on there. It was just a holiday or something. Sometimes it wasn't, because we thought, well, we'll just tie that in there. I'll send you under July 3th, the CBA might, because they don't need much.
I believe the Poli, they do have a December meeting. And if I'm correct, there, I did look today, there was no July meeting in 2022.
Right. They just approved that today. They know, they just approved that today that they will be scrapping the July meeting. They talked about bringing it back. But then today they said, well, if we bring it back, then we can cancel it. And I said, well, if you have it on, some people might not plan a vacation. If you're just going to cancel it, so the consent was, let's just leave it off. So the holiday trail will be, it was just approved today, so we'll update that match their approved calendar, meeting calendar.
And then do the third, one thing, December.
Yeah, they have, they actually have a December meeting and their schedule as well. Well, that would be updated. They approved theirs today.
Do we want to revisit moving our schedule?
No.
Sorry, did you say something on here needed to be revised?
The Poli trail.
Just Poli trail.
Yeah. And cable commission, I haven't checked on theirs, you know, I own that here in Washington. So I don't know, whatever, the cable commission, again, you're basically adapting your schedule. These are all on there for courtesy, for courtesy. Right. So the assistance, verification early on, at least quarterly, so. They're required in order, it's like, DDA, they approve their own. But again, the village council, CBA, plant commission, maybe what you guys really typically approve. Those are on there for reference.
Okay. I'll move to approve the village meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in bigger say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Holiday closings for 2023.
And those are just on per the personnel manual?
Yep.
Just so we can see them in front of you. Here, it's pretty beautiful.
Yep. Wonderful. No motion or anything needed on that. That's just per usual.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments about the holiday schedule? And we'll move on to nine H. A proposed resolution 2215 for recognition of our fire chief Pete Schultz career. And I'll go ahead and take the honor of reading this out loud to us, don't mind. So this is appreciation and recognition of service to our fire chief Pete Schultz. Whereas Pete Schultz started his career with the Oxford Fire Department in February of 1976 as a paid on call firefighter and has served as citizens of the Oxford community for more than 46 years. And whereas Pete Schultz has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the Oxford community while providing exceptional fire protection and life saving activities to thousands of families for his long career. And whereas in his role as the Oxford fire chief, Pete Schultz has given back to our community by also volunteering on numerous boards and committees, including the village of Oxford downtown development authority. And whereas Pete Schultz has fostered positive partnerships with numerous community organizations throughout Oxford and surrounding area. Now therefore be it resolved that the village council of Oxford, Michigan recognizes and expresses its sincere appreciation to chief Pete Schultz for his hard work, dedication and guidance to our Oxford community and its residents and wishes Pete Schultz all the best in his future endeavors. Movement?
Support.
Movement seconded. Roll call vote please.
Or Jo?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And the resolution has passed and if you don't mind coming up, Chief, we'd like to.
I just want to.
Sorry, once you guys did it on the front. I think that's efficient.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Kelly? No, I'm all right.
Who's calling?
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
My day, right? It's not very efficient, but I eat, so I'm bored. Thank you. But Terry's still here too.
If we can get everybody up to my council.
That's good. Right there. You coming in here?
Uh huh.
Will you go up there?
No.
It isn't the question.
Okay, go up there.
You should ask, right?
She doesn't know me as well as Allison does.
Chenzel. There's an app for everything I got you. There's an app for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good for you.
That's true.
That's good for you.
We wanted to really make you sit through the entire meeting.
The last one you had to sit through, that's all right.
Shall we put something on our future agendas for him every week to prevent us from?
So you have the DDA of things.
Yeah, there we are.
Now he can be like chair.
Kelly.
But I haven't seen my videos.
I didn't know if I told you.
All right. Number 10, we don't have anything. Number 11's, public comment? Any public comment?
Thank you very much, council members. I would like to heartfully thank the entire village council, the village of Oxford for supporting me for 46 years. It's hard to believe that I started my career right out back here in the, in the building right here. And at that time, that building was only two years old. I, you know, I started this apartment, so. It's been very rewarding. Been some really, really good times, very sad times, some very trying times that we've been through. The entire growth that we went through between the village and the township and everything back and forth. But I think in the end, we've come up with one of the best departments practically in the state right now. I'm very proud of that. Looking forward to, please be supportive of the new chief when he comes in. And I again, talked to Mr. Davis, but I highly recommend we need to get the fire prevention ordinance updated as, as quick as possible. We were running into city issues right now in a couple of places and we need the authority to be able to, to take place. Thank you very much again. I really agree. It was a great, great, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number 12, committee report. A N O D A.
We did not have a forum. We're having a meeting tomorrow and we've got some financials that need to be approved. You know, but in them with the transportation changes going through, there's a lot of meetings and, you know, everything's just starting to get in place. So I don't really have updates from it yet, but it is going to, you know, so far it's changing like pay and things like that in a good way. And so it's, it's turning out to be very good so far from what I can see.
Great. Thank you. Is there a planning commission update? You said they met yesterday, was it?
Yes. They, they approved this sign, a special sign we were for paramount, you know, the 17th cell?
Yeah.
17 cell. It'd be nice with the sign, the building was beautiful. The owner really did advise and the tenants were.
Great. And let's get the people commission unless anyone has any information on that. I'll move on to the DDA.
All the good wonderful things. You're talking right now. I'm not enough. Okay, I'm bored. I'm serious when I say all the wonderful things. So there's a lot of wonderful things. We have a wonderful board. So yeah, so we finished out our holiday markets. We gave a pretty good recap of this year and just a couple of things to highlight. The wonderful grants that we received, over $300,000 in grants this year. Seventeen signed facade grants this year, which is incredible. Well over, it will be over $60,000 in grants that we gave out to the community. But yeah, we are already forming our partnership with Lake Orion to keep going through 2023. And we're going to be kicking off restaurant week in January to try to support some of the restaurant downtime that they usually have in January. So wonderful things happening. What did I miss, Ashley?
Um, just really trying, I mean, we already touched on it, but really trying to plan 2023. We're in a situation where we're kind of ahead of the game for the first time, for the first time. But like we're, because things have been going so well and we've been all planning, like we're able to plan more in advance. And so I'm looking for sponsorships for the trolley for next year. Going through lots of trolley work right now and just goal setting and trying to accomplish things in the coming year.
And we also have a certificate for Pete's. Come back. Okay. So there's a reason why I'm doing it here, not at our DDA board meeting, because you're not leaving the DDA. But still want to say thank you. So this is not, I, I'll be honest with you. So I took this to Joe earlier and I said, for your service to the Oxford community and your continued support of the DDA, but he told me, no, don't be pushy. So I just, I just put, and the DDA board. So thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
So we can't do it. Oh, here, Queen, I want to get in here with him. Yay, thank you.
Appreciate, thank you.
So we can't do it without me, especially when we have to redo the TIF plan this year. So we're making him stay. And who wants to step all the way into retirement? I would, you know, human drive when you're crazy. So there's, there's that, that we're talking to him this day and for that. But everything else is great. I just wanted to thank all of you council members for being so supportive of the DDA. And Terry on the audit, thank you for helping me get through that and walking me through a lot of those documents. And Joe, as always, like just love working with you guys and the whole staff. But just really appreciate the relationship that the DDA and the village have together. I just feel like the team is even stronger than last year, which is hard to believe. So we're very excited about 2023.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. All you answer?
Yeah, they approved their schedule. They also are applying county parks grant. They won't be competing with us per se. They're looking for design grant. So I sent her a board to live brand for their efforts. There also is a wins, the other or something like that grant they're playing for. They're looking to resurface the entire trail for the next couple of years. They have a few bridges that need a little work as well. And they don't have a lot of money for revenue, you know, it's, it's not all between the townships and the members and a couple of villages. Now they did budget amendments today to wrap up the year and it's $171,000. So what they do with that, they pay Linda not enough for all this she does. She is volunteer. They do a lot for that kind of money. So, and you know, people can see the trail is great shape. So they have a good board.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Let me pass that to your part.
Okay, thanks.
The DDA is on and so that's a little unusual. So they must have met.
We met sometime in the recent past. I don't think it was, it wasn't in between our last meeting.
Yeah.
It was two or three years. So we did meet. So we, I don't want to see your call. It was for what's going to be a car wash. Was it, was it Cox heating and cooling?
Yeah, at one time, it was a lot of things. Two years.
Yes, I think that was most recently. Part of it, so with the new car wash coming in, our ordinance says that the vacuum mechanism needs to be away. It's not visually appealing. However, if they put it in the back of the property, that busts up to residential. And so we approved.
First.
Thank you, appearance, for the vacuum mechanism to be up front. It'll be kind of enclosed, not in the way, but you're going to have the road traffic there. And that way, no future, current or future residents will be impacted by that noise, hopefully. So. And the building is completely down now.
Yes, I noticed that. And then I was wondering what was there. You pass things sometimes.
Was Oxford airbag a lot of years?
I remember this running a movie as a kid.
Yeah, right. With Black Buster or something.
No, it was like.
Right. I think, oh, okay.
Interesting.
And of course, somebody put out some online recently, it was the greenhouse from Wayman or the greenhouse area. The stone way up front, stone building. That was one of the, I have it in my first last name, but wasn't ready. So that was what people changed, but hopefully it will.
Yeah.
There's some water testing issues working on it.
Got you. Good. Good catching that. Very good. Item G, manager clerk and secretary parts?
Terry, you go first.
Sure.
I just want to thank the council for your support and for the cost of living. I really do enjoy working with all of you and working here with Joe and Kelly. We do have a really good team. I agree with that. So that just makes everybody's job so much easier, even though we have some ups and downs, you know, with our own areas. Overall, when those lows happen, we get some help and chocolate. So, you know, just thank you for that. The audit went great. Really grateful that you support the, the services that Plant brand provides because they are really important. It's just been such a higher level of accounting now and reporting requirements that we really do need that level of oversight. And as the audit reported, it was, it's, it's a good thing and it showed, you know, to be their ace client. I didn't know that. But yeah, so that's, that makes us all really, yeah. You can be, you know, confident in the numbers that you're getting and the reporting that you're getting. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to say that the chief there, it's been, he's been very helpful over the years, my five years being here this month. Planning commission, site plan reviews and things like that, as well as general items. So we've worked with Lieutenant Franz and he's going to be fine and great too. I've met future chief, chief majesty. I've met with him a few times as well. So I think we'll be in good shape. It's just hard to transition. We have that knowledge and historical knowledge there. The relationships, it's hard to build new ones, but of course we will. And that's something with him in great hands. And thank you council for your generous support. The support we get from you guys is great. Then you back it up with rewards. So that's wonderful. I really enjoy our closed sessions when we're doing our review because it's fun and we get to talk and we get to lay it out and that's great. So that's good. And other than that, I just want to say Merry Christmas and hope everybody has a great, safe Christmas and years.
You too. Thank you. All right, council comments? Laura, can I start us off?
Yeah, just want to thank chief for all your knowledge and love of the community. It's, it's going to be missed. And like Joseph, I'm sure will be in good hands, but just the same, we would definitely be missed. I would love to hear from you if, if you have time to talk about how we can make the fire prevention ordinance valid. And what we've done in the past, the impact difficulty, seeing how we can make it work. So. Additionally, Terry and Joe, this is amazing. I knew what his answer was going to be to my question about what we can do different, but it was. I knew what his answer was going to be to my question about what we can do different, but it was nice to hear it from him. That we are a model in meeting for what other villages should be doing and townships and that. So I am very pleased with that and it is something that you can see on his chart where and why this change just happened and it's you, you too, so thank you. And, yeah, I'm ready to, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and stay healthy. Thank you, Chief.
It's been a pleasure getting to know you. I know it's only been a short time and I have some longer standing relationships with other folks, but it's always great to work with you. So thank you for all of your hard work over the many years. Kudo to Terry and Joe, I'm sure Joe's also good, and I'm going to also say to Terry, because I know how much he put into this and, I mean, for us to be in this kind of financial shank after, you know, I think all of us are very, like, trying to, you know, we're in wow, but like, we've tried to pinch pennies and come up with things, we've made it feasible for us to be able to do the things that we all want to do that our community needs and thank you for that. Other than that, happy holidays.
Well, thank you for everything you've done and hearing you talk about white shirt meetings a long time ago and then I ended up being at the white shirt meetings. Quite the term, but thank you a lot. I'm sure I'm still going to text you random things. I'm sure Ross is still going to be, when that pipe was put in there in the eighties, why, and where, why can't you find the paperwork? Your institutional memory will be missed. Yes, the audit is absolutely wonderful. Echo Ashley and Laurie's sentiments. Thank you, and I know that's a huge, I'm sure you're ready to enjoy your holidays with that being over now.
Thanks. I'll echo everyone's sentiments too, thank you, Chief, thank you, Wendy as well, so behind every great man is an even better woman. We appreciate you, so thanks for managing clerk and treasurer for always doing exceptional work, so we really appreciate you and I'm glad you can feel that from us, so it's great. And props to Kelly as always too, you just rocked the DDA and brought our, our downtown is the way it is now because of you. I truly believe that, you have a great board to support you, but you're the leader in our community, so I see that, I think everybody sees that, so. Fantastic job, so.
We got called on Mark a bunch of times this Christmas and I said, we're all at our town.
With that, is there any further comments or comments? I'll move to adjourn at 8:15, that's record timing.
Second.